Good evening, everyone. Let the record show that all members of the City Council are present with the exception of Councilmen Catlin and Partey. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted on the west wall of the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is Item A, Approve Agenda as Submitted. Item B, Receive and Place on File All Notices Pertaining to This Meeting. Item C, Receive and Place on File All Materials Having Any Bearing on This Meeting. Item D, Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting on June 1st, 2015, as on file in the City Clerk's Office. Item E, Approval of Treasurers' Report of Claims. Item E1, Approval of Street Department Claims in the Amount of $40,120.06, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item E2, Approval of Main Street Claim in the Amount of $5. Item E3, Approval of Gauge Area Growth and Gauge Claim in the Amount of $6,400. Item E4, Approval of the Balance of the Treasurers' Report of Claims in the Amount of $444.241.50. Item F, Approval of Boswell Report of Claims in the Amount of $7,155.77. Item G, Resolution Number 5878, Authorizing Vendors Permission to Sell Goods on City Property in Charles Park, Fifth Street, between High Street and Ella Street, Fifth Street between Ella Street and Court Street, and the Green Space located east of North Second Street between Ella Street and Grant Street for Homestead Days, June 14th through the 21st, 2015.
I will abstain from E3.
So noted.
I will abstain from E2.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Morgan?
I move that the items listed under the Consent Agenda would be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
You forgot to ask if any councilman or proponent wanted anything removed from the Consent Agenda.
Does anybody want anything removed from the Consent Agenda? Mr. Kerr?
No, I just...
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Anybody from the public? All right, well...
Got a motion. Was there a second?
Was there a second?
Second.
Moved by Billsbach, Mr. Kerr. Billsbach did that.
I'm sorry.
That the items under the Consent Agenda be approved. Your vote, please. And that is approved, 6-0. All right. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing concerning an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $250,000 for the reconstruction of North Second Street between Ella Street and Grant Street.
This is a, if you're recalling in your one and six-year road plan, we had in there the reconstruction of Second Street from Ella to Grant Street. As you probably recall, we have a grant already to redo Second Street from Court Street to Ella Street, picking the bricks up, putting concrete, and then putting the bricks back and redoing that block. When looking at it, we thought if we're going to close that lane or that street to traffic, we thought it'd be best to try to do all of it at one time rather than closing it once and then coming back a year or two later. And so we moved the remaining portion of Second Street up in the one and six-year road plan to try to match up with the other grant. As part of that, we started looking to see what other funds would be available. In the Community Development Block Grant, there are funds available for a Public Works Grant in which this area qualifies. So this application is applying for those funds. You'll see the maximum amount is $250,000 for that project. That's what we're applying for.
Is that in addition to the Transportation Enhancement Grant?
Correct.
Okay.
The Transportation Enhancement Grant would take care of Court to Ella. The Public Works Grant would help from Ella to Grant Street.
Ah-huh.
Would not cover all the costs, but would certainly help defer part of it.
Rich?
And what's our, we've got to contribute $320,000.
I believe the total cost of the project is estimated $500,000, and so the match is not an issue. The project will well exceed what the match would be.
It'll come out of LB840.
Uh, no, it'll come out of Street Department funds. It's an item that we're working on budgeting for, for next year.
Tobias?
Yes.
Are you talking about increasing the grade at all on Second?
Yes, some of the issues we would work on is, one, is taking out the hills, if you will, that are in there. There is the old railroad tracks that run through there. We'd work on making that so it's all nice and level, probably raise the better, the road up to match the grade that's to the east there. Work on the drainage as well, so it drains better in those rain events.
Yeah, we had a long conversation with James about that when we were talking about the bricked portion and where the drains is set and how it drains away. So, Mike, and I know that in the past we've had conversations about when Second Street was done, but obviously we're moving that up. So my question is, is if you elevate Second Street between Ella and Grant, does that change our engineering needs between, for the first piece of it where the brick is?
No. What we're going to do is allow them to kind of set the height on Court to Ella and match that intersection there and match the intersection on the Grant Street area, and then adjust the grade in between those to get it to work out.
Okay. Okay. So...
They'll have to be clay brought in to raise that section between Ella and Grant.
Right. My assumption is that you're going to raise the grade to, so it flows north?
Yes, we'll work, we may actually, you may change the grade and you may break it and run it both ways a little bit to try to get the water off there rather than trying to overwhelm one area.
So, how, do the two projects coincide? You're going to do one and then, you're going to have the street closed for the entire time, but you're going to do one? Do you have to complete the first one under the one grant before the other one starts? Can you do them in succession?
You can do them at the same time. The issue is going to be, is right now, NDR is not planning on letting the bid out on the brick portion of it until, I think, May or June of next year. So it would be a fall construction period?
Of '17?
Of '16.
'16.
So then the question is, is what is James's comfort pouring concrete in the fall? Or would he rather try to do that portion first? The timing, we're still trying to work out, but we're going to try to do them so people are only inconvenienced once.
It would be nice if the street was just closed once, that's for sure.
I drive on it every day. It would be really nice if it was closed only once, so, okay.
That's a big bypass. It's a big bypass street.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Okay, Mr. Morgan, I'd suggest that we close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Been moved by Morgan, seconded by Cook, that we close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Your vote, please. And that is approved, 6-0. Next, I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 5779, authorizing the application in the amount of $250,000 for the reconstruction of North Second Street between Ella Street and Grant Street.
I move that Resolution Number 5779 be passed and adopted.
Second.
By Morgan, seconded by Kerr, that 5779 be passed and adopted. Any further discussion? From the council, from the audience. Seeing none, your vote, please. And that is approved, 6-0. Resolution Number 5779 has been passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda, Item B, Resolution Number 5780, authorizing the application under the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development Rural Business Development Grant Program in the amount of $50,000 to establish a revolving loan fund for qualifying business pursuant to the grant application and award.
I move that Resolution Number 5780 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Morgan, seconded by Cook, that Resolution Number 5780 be passed and adopted. Discussion. Mr. Kerr?
Well, I was, I was on the committee that, we talked about this at first. This isn't for the downtown area. They, they, they said we couldn't have it for the downtown area, so now it's for outlying areas?
We already have a revolving loan fund for the downtown area.
Have we had any interest from the outlying areas on this thing yet? Have we, has anybody applied for it or asked us to go after this, or?
I believe that would be the next phase.
The next phase. To understand our timeline in this, is we initially were looking at, and this loan is dedicated specifically to facade improvements. And yes, it was discussed initially for downtown, because one of the elements of this is the first $50,000 will come from USDA, will establish a revolving loan fund, and then, as the pre-application stated, the city's going to match an additional $50,000 for facade improvement. And so an applicant will come in, say they have a $10,000 project, they'll apply for $5,000 in USDA dollars, they'll apply for $5,000 in city funds. If the project is complete, the way that we have structured it is the city funds are forgiven and the USDA funds are paid back into the revolving loan fund.
At what interest rate?
That would have to be established pursuant to the rules and regulations of USDA.
Do that on a case-by-case.
Yep. So, um, once we established that, we turned in the pre-application for that idea, which at the time did, as you correctly stated, Councilman Kerr include downtown, because obviously we have some facade issues downtown. We're continuing to try and help assist and address. We received approval of our pre-application, and in that approval, it was noted to us some specifics that we would need to do. The first being that due to the fact that Main Street Beatrice currently operates their own USDA RBGG fund for this exact sort of purpose, the USDA does not want to overlap that fund. And so we are not able to offer this to anyone that's covered in their coverage area as they have established in downtown Beatrice.
And their coverage area goes from where to where to where to where?
Well, Michael...
Sixteen block, sixteen-block area.
Basically, what, Second to Tenth?
Second to just...
Market to... Market to Ella?
Market to Ella is in broad terms, and that's not exact by any means. If you'd ever like, I could bring that up.
I'll come check, would you? So if, if they have the established fund that they have now, these new funds will never be able to be available to the downtown area?
The next element of it, just so that we cover all the bases on this, is also that this sort of USDA revolving loan fund, you also will need to identify business operators that qualify as a small emerging or emerging business. So that's 50 or less employees, I think gross revenues below $1 million. And then we'll need to identify those by the time we turn in the application, which is in July, and we'll have to get them to basically submit a letter of commitment that they're going to apply to this fund and undertake a project. Enough to cover our, close to our $50,000, so, but...
They typically give quite a period of time before you have to loan out all of the money. I think the Main Street one's been going on for several years.
Been going on for some time, and it's, it's been...
They're fairly lenient on...
Very lenient, yeah.
But when you write the, when you write the application, we have to have so many people on board with it, don't we?
It was identified by Bill Shepherd, who is the Business Program Specialist for USDA here in Nebraska, that we'll need to identify specific businesses to be assisted in the number of jobs created and/or retained for each business as a result of receiving assistance. And this will need to be documented by a commitment letter submitted by the small and emerging private enterprise who will utilize the RBGG revolving loan funds if application were to be approved. So, I take that from his instructions to be, we'll need to line up people in the next coming weeks to see if they're interested in doing this, and then they'll submit a letter of commitment.
So we got two or three weeks to get that done?
Yep.
Who's going to do it?
I assume City Administration will be doing that.
They don't give you much time, do they?
Well, it gives, we have some assistance from the news media also.
Okay.
Now, is that, that's a USDA requirement of the 50 or fewer employees and less than 1 million growth? That's a USDA requirement?
Yes.
How many businesses, just offhand, do we have outside of the downtown area that would even qualify for that? Just, just the offhand?
The sixteen-block area?
No.
Outside the sixteen-block?
I know. Outside the sixteen-block?
With facade problems.
Seventy, eighty would be quite a few.
Seventy or eighty, I would guess.
Easily.
But we'll have to note that it is for facade improvement, so we have a large number of businesses that operate with steel buildings and things like that. There's still opportunity there, though, but those hold up a little better and a little differently than the traditional downtown brick-and-mortar buildings, so...
I hope that'll give a chance for some of the building owners to, to really shape up some of their facades and maybe give a little better appearance than what some of them are showing right now. Gives them incentive, but...
Any other questions from the council?
It eliminates part of the excuses that...
What about from the public? Any comments? All right. We have a motion on the floor. Your vote, please. And that is approved, 6-0. Resolution Number 5780 has been passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 5781, removing the no parking zone along the east side of 11th Street from Jackson Street to Arthur Street.
I move that Resolution Number 5781 be passed and adopted.
For a second.
Moved by Morgan, seconded by Kerr, that 5781 be passed and adopted. Discussion, who's going to tackle this?
It's to be along 11th Street, which is near the old hospital. We had some of the residents there approach the city and ask that the no parking in that area be removed and they'd be allowed to park along the east side of the road. Traffic committee reviewed it, saw no reason to continue to have no parking on that side of the street, and therefore you have the resolution.
This is just a one-block area? Am I saying that right?
Yes, I believe it's one block.
Comments? Suggestions, questions? Anybody from the public? All right, seeing none, your vote, please. That is approved, 6-0. Resolution Number 5781 has been passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 5782, executing a contract for sale of real estate to David J. Doring and Peggy L. Doring.
I move that Resolution Number 5782 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by Morgan, seconded by Cook, that Resolution Number 5782 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
Last time we talked about Mr. Doring wanting to purchase that portion of Swarthmore Avenue, the vacated portion of Swarthmore Avenue, which is adjacent to his property, and before you is the contract for the sale of that real estate to Mr. Doring and his wife for $1,500, as previously discussed. I believe there's one issue with regards to an easement and location of that easement. I'll let Mr. Butcher talk about that.
Initially, when we drafted this, as it is vacated property, we traditionally set in a, if we were vacating the entire street and then selling it away, we would traditionally set a 20-foot utility easement right down the center of it. Since we're only vacating the southern portion, or the southern portion of it's vacated and that's what we're selling here today, we were going to reserve a 10-foot utility, general utility easement on the north part of that, and then if we ever sold the northern section of the vacated, we'd add another 10 feet. As we went in and we talked to Dave, he noted that the utilities there have already been established in the exterior right-of-way adjacent to his property, and so the contract, the portion of it that regards to easement is incorrect, and what we would recommend is an amendment that would state that the buyer shall sign a generally to the degrees necessary on, as necessary in the above-described property prior to the closing date. We talked to David, and he's here, and he's approved of that, and we'll go out and survey and make sure we put in the right amount. Based on the estimate, it's going to be approximately 15 feet of utility easement just from, because there's an overhead utility line and then an underground water line that's already passing through there.
And all of this will be covered under the contractual arrangement?
Yep, under the contract.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Instead of 10, we get, you're putting 15 on it?
We don't know, but as I stated, that the way that I would draft the amendment to the contract would be, buyer shall sign a general utility easement as necessary on the above-described property prior to the date of closing. And so if someone would make that motion, we'll add that to this. As I said, we'll work with David this week, and we'll go out there and get, get checked out and measured properly, so we have correct access and we're not ripping up his whole yard to get in there and get out of there if we should ever need to do that.
And we still have 33 feet on the north side or on the other side, correct?
No. It's 33 feet of right-of-way total that we're selling. We're going to reserve a portion of that 33 feet. We just don't know exactly how much. Traditionally, we would, we would reserve 10.
That's a 66-foot crowd.
Yes.
Correct.
Right. Do we need to do an amendment or a motion on the amendment, or can we cover it under this with a contractual arrangement formulated by you? What would you feel comfortable with?
I feel comfortable with the, with the motion, and then I'll redraft the contract pursuant to our motion.
City Council okay with that?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion?
Do you want the motion to amend?
Yeah, I think Kerr's moving the amendment.
I beg your pardon.
I'll make a motion to amend it as of, as per the city attorney's suggestion.
Recommendation, okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Morgan, that we modify the agreement to include the necessary footage and easement. Any further discussion? Your vote on the amendment. That is approved, 6-0. Now, we're going to vote on the motion to approve Resolution 5782. Any further discussion? Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, 6-0. Resolution Number 5782 has been approved. Next item is Resolution Number, is Resolution Number 5783, executing the loan agreement and promissory note between the City of Beatrice and New Nebraska RC LLC, a Nebraska limited liability company, for a direct loan up to the amount of $35,000 under the City of Beatrice LB840 Fund for Economic Development.
I move that Resolution Number 5783 be passed and adopted.
Second. Moved by Morgan, seconded by Billsbach, that Resolution Number 5783 be passed and adopted. Tobias, you want to start, and then we'll ask Mr. Milledge if there's any questions to come forward?
Yes, as you saw in your packets last time, New Nebraska has submitted an application for funding up to $35,000 to assist them with some feasibility studies in looking at the feasibility of building a assisted living facility here in Beatrice. Part of those feasibility studies will include some architecture work, some engineering studies, and some general business plans and those types of things. The agreement, as it's written before you, New Nebraska will go out, they'll hire whoever it is they need to do to perform that work, present either an invoice or a receipt to the city. We then reimburse them half of what they've expended, up to a total of $35,000. At the end, the city gets a copy of all of the paperwork that is done, all the different studies that are completed. The city will retain a copy of those, and New Nebraska has agreed to sign some personal guarantees up to half of the loaned amount. If they build within timeframes that's set forth in the agreement, then the remaining portion would be forgiven by the city. If they don't build, it gets repaid up to $17,500.
This, by the way, was approved by the CARC Committee. Gentlemen, any comments? Questions?
Stan?
Yes?
I think it's the only, the only, I have no questions. I, all my questions, I funneled through Tobias after we got the information last time. I welcome any and all enterprise. I just was a little, and I, sorry, and I'm supporting it simply because we're going to have the information that this is going to generate. I just always wished that it was something else, something, you know, I just hate to see us heading in that direction, but I, so, I'm still in supporting, I'm supporting it, but I wish it was a different type of enterprise. I don't want us to see, I don't want to see Beatrice become a retirement community, and solely that, and that's, I have a feeling we're slipping in that direction, so, I'm not going to vote against it, but I'm not excited about it.
Anybody else?
I'm just happy that they chose to look at Beatrice and, you know, to be able to possibly create 60 jobs and spend, what, $2.5 million there. I'm just happy they...
It's going to be on the tax rolls.
Yep, that's it. If they, yeah, if they are within the city limits, yeah, and I get that, I get all of that, and I'm, and I welcome, like I said, I welcome any and all enterprise. I just, where I'm at.
Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Yes, Rich?
The 60, I assume you're the gentleman that...
Why don't we have Brian come on up? And Glenis, if you want to come up also, that'd be great, if you've got questions. Brian, if you would, if, just give, as a courtesy, your name and an address, please.
My name is Brian Milledge. I'm from Auburn, Nebraska. I grew up in Syracuse, I was born in Syracuse, I lived in Auburn all of my life, so I'm a resident of southeast Nebraska all my days. I have some family over here in Beatrice. And to you, Mr. Fairbanks, that's a very, very good issue. No small town likes to turn into retirement village, because that's kind of happening. We did a preliminary report in-house of ourself, and the reason that we chose Beatrice is two reasons. And one was the demographic baby boomer issue, that right now, there's going to be enough people that's going to need this service, and there's not enough services and beds in the town to service that. So, we're believing that if we move forward, we're actually filling a need, a void that is there, and that also helps to keep people here in this area.
Yeah, I'm in that age group. I get that.
Because if Grandma and Grandpa stay here, then the kids stay here now, so...
Glenis?
Good evening. I'm Glenis with Engage, and Brian Milledge came to us to find some preliminary information, and we were happy to help with that. But I also wanted to make note, I guess, as far as, if you look at, you know, if there is a need for housing, it kind of goes along with, again, the housing study that we're going, going to do, and if folks can move into those kinds of facilities, it would free up other housing, that seems to be a need in this community. Again, potential investment has been mentioned and jobs. And also, I was intrigued that within their plan, and they're working on an EB5, which is looking at some foreign investor, investment funds, and not only could it potentially help this, this business opportunity, but I think that there could be some other opportunities for some, working with them for other investments for other enterprises down the road. So I was excited to see that they're working on that end of it, and, you know, we might be able to use that, utilize that in another way later on.
We were the first EB5 regional center in the state of Nebraska, and this will be one of the very first EB5 projects on ground and being built. If I may, I would like to ask the City Council for one thing. As we move forward, we're ready to move forward. We, if we move forward tonight, tomorrow morning, I will make some phone calls, and many of the things and the actions that I need or want to have done, we'll start moving tomorrow morning. One of the things in the agreement, the way it is written, asked for the city to loan our company some money, and the, in response to that, the, our company then naturally guarantees that, and also personally provides guarantor from us as the owners. There's three of us. In this agreement, it also asks for a personal guarantee for the whole amount. We would like to move that we do a personal guarantee for the prorata of what we have, we would borrow for that. As business people, we're, we're asked to do loans many times, and we do a lot of business in our own town, but also with bigger banks, and how it stays now, if we did get money from the city, whether it's $5 or up to 70, or up to the amount we can get, the company, New Nebraska, would have the guarantor of all that money. If that company did not supply any or all of those funds, our personal guarantee would back that up. What we would like, instead of each individual person having the full guarantee, the same guarantee of all the money, but individually, the prorata of what we have in our company at 33%, we all have equal participation. So, we would like to change it just a little, and that is, the city still gets the same full guarantee, but it's the guarantee of each individual, the prorata of what they own in the company. And that's just a little bit of, like, when we go out to a bank, that's how it would work, and so we just feel it would be prudent to, in our opinion, that's how we would like to do it as we stood before you now.
If we say no, is that a deal-breaker?
Right now, I have two partners, and those two partners are lawyers, and I feel very strongly to listen to my friends and my partners and my lawyers, and... And right now, they do, they are not ready to move forward if each of us individually are asked to fully guarantee that loan instead of prorata.
Okay, I got two lawyers up here. What do you guys say?
So, now we're getting to the point of contract negotiation, which to show our hand is what we're doing.
Shall we table this until you guys get this worked out?
I don't think so. I don't think that's necessary. Rick, did you have a comment?
Oh, no.
Oh, I thought you were looking at me. You had a comment.
I never did get in on this thing yet.
Okay.
First of all, I played against Auburn in baseball when I was a kid, and I hated it. But, you guys will run this business? It is your business? You don't just build it and then sell it off to somebody else to run it? Is that...
Yes, our company, New Nebraska, will own and operate this.
Own and operate?
We will hire somebody to be the manager.
Right.
Nobody in our group has expertise to run an assisted living. So we'll have to hire a manager.
Okay. That's sixty employees. Man, that sounds good to me. I like that. It's a lot better than the four or five that we've had here lately. But what is the pay scale and the benefit scales of these sixty people? Are you going to supply benefits? And what do you think the pay scale, just off the cuff with your other ones, are we looking? Are we looking at twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen dollars an hour?
Of course, there will be custodial, office health, cleaning staff, the whole bit. So, it'll move from top to bottom, but we see it above fourteen or fifteen dollars.
Say your direct care, your CNAs and your...
You're pushing twenty.
You are...
You have to. You're not going to hire them.
Ted?
How do we...
Just a minute. Ted?
Well, I just kind of had a little sidebar with Greg. I want to know if we can do that, what he's requesting. I don't have any problem with that on this portion of it. I, so, because we're talking about a pretty limited amount of revenue here, funds here. You're talking about thirty-five thousand dollars or thirty...
What's his split on that?
It's technically, in regards to the personal guarantees, they're only guaranteeing seventeen thousand five hundred. And we take that divided by three is what Brian's requesting essentially.
And in the scheme of things here, it's a pretty small amount. And I, some, as long as they, I don't have a problem with changing the contract tonight. But I'd like to, you know, moving forward, like to have it spelled out beforehand so it doesn't come in, you know, twelfth hour, so.
This is the agreement that the C.A.R.C. approved. And that's why it's coming to you this way.
Yeah, and I understand that. I also understand your request. And I don't think that, and I don't think that dividing it up between three, it's not a big deal. So, I guess what I'd like to do is make a motion that we honor his request, divide it so the grantors or the guarantees are divided equally in thirds, thirty-three, 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 as requested. Can we do that, Greg?
I don't know that we can't. We're just changing the language that's contained in the attachments to the resolution, which is the loan agreement.
I guess my only, the only concern that I would have is...
And I'd also, just to interrupt, I'd also note that Brian and New Nebraska have not signed it yet. So it's not like we're changing a signed agreement.
Not actually changing the signed contract.
We're basically making this offer to them by our action tonight, and then all parties will sign.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that I guess would bring to mind that if it does go into, you know, if it fails for some reason and we have to get it from all three of them, that it doesn't hinge that we couldn't collect from one of them or two of them if we couldn't collect from all three. So, I mean, that would be the only...
To give you an example, because it seems like we're going to hash it out tonight, if for some reason one of Brian's other two partners would say file for bankruptcy, then we couldn't pursue that portion against Brian or the other partner, and it would just be lost. Versus, traditionally, how this is written, we would just usually file a lawsuit against all three of them, name them all, and then we could pursue how we'd like.
Well, from the packet of information I got from Tobias before we discussed this, these guys, they're not, this isn't your first enterprise. And they also understand that if that were to occur, if one of them to file bankruptcy or one of them would default on this, they are going to need the city of Beatrice throughout their process. That kind of stops, that kind of stops a cooperative work. So, there again, I don't have a problem with that tonight. Like to make the motion, let us move forward.
What is your motion?
That we grant his request and divide it equally between the three partners.
So you're amending the original motion?
Yeah.
I'll give you the second.
Okay. Been moved by Fairbanks, seconded by Cook, that we do limited guarantees for the amount of money that we would advance to New Nebraska?
Yeah, since I made the motion and then discussed the heck out of it before that, so I guess, so, sorry.
Is there any other discussion?
Personally, I don't see a difference. Apparently, I don't understand it, so.
It's limited guarantees versus a hundred percent guarantee. It's limited guarantees versus a hundred percent guarantee from each individual partner.
Okay.
Okay.
Gotcha.
All right. Any else, anybody else from the public? So we're going to vote on the amendment first. All right. Your vote, please. That is approved five to one, with Councilman Kerr voting against. All right, now we'll vote on the motion to approve Resolution fifty-seven-eighty-three. Any further discussion on fifty-seven-eighty-three from the council, from the public? And your vote, please. And that is approved six-zero. Resolution number fifty-seven-eighty-three has been passed and adopted. Thank you, Brian, for coming over. You bet. Next item on the agenda is Resolution number fifty-seven-eighty-four, entering into an agreement with Gage Area Growth Enterprises, a Nebraska nonprofit corporation, Engage, to provide funding as authorized by Nebraska statute thirteen-three-one-five.
I move that Resolution number fifty-seven-eighty-four be passed and adopted.
Second. Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Kerr, that fifty-seven-eighty-four be passed and adopted. Discussion.
This agreement is very similar to the current agreement. It calls out for the same dollar amount, the reimbursement of up to a hundred thousand dollars as a three-year agreement. I believe really everything else in there is the same. We changed the, obviously, the term of the contract. We moved it forward three years. Outside of that, Mr. Butcher, do you know of any real changes to note?
I have no changes.
Comments? Questions?
And I just note, the one thing I would note is, we did, after the initial passage of the original Engage resolution, we did make an amendment to that at the time to decipher when we would like financial reports delivered to the city, and we have retained that information. So, in any way, you were comparing this to the original agreement signed three years ago. That's the only slight change, and we retained that in this version.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, your vote, please. And that is approved six-zero. I beg your pardon, five in favor, and Bob Morgan abstained.
Thank you for your support.
You bet. Thanks, Glenis.
Keep it coming, Glenis.
Fifty-seven, Resolution number fifty-seven-eighty-four has been passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to convey real estate described as a south thirty-three feet of vacated Swarthmore Avenue adjacent to lot one block fifteen, Brumbach Second Edition, owned by the City of Beatrice, to David J. Doring and Peggy L. Doring.
I move that said ordinance be given number fifteen-zero-nine. The title there of be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Been moved by Morgan, seconded by Cook, that ordinance number fifteen-zero-nine be read by title only three times tonight. There is no discussion if the rules are suspended. Your votes, please. And that is approved six-zero. Ordinance number fifteen-zero-nine the first time. I beg your pardon.
Twelve.
I'm sorry. Ordinance number fifteen-zero-one-twelve by number the first time. Ordinance number fifteen-zero-one-two by number only the second time. And ordinance number fifteen-zero-one-two the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number fifteen-zero-one-two be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Morgan, seconded by Claybaugh, that ordinance number fifteen-zero-one-two be passed and approved. Any further discussion from the council, from the audience? Your vote, please. And that is approved six-zero. Ordinance number fifteen-zero-one-two has been passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda is a public forum. The public forum is for the purpose of, for the presentation of an item by the general public to the City Council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the City Council at this time. Anybody from the council with something or anything for the public forum? Rich?
The reason that Councilman Party isn't here tonight, and I'd like to congratulate him and Pat, they had a granddaughter born Friday in Arkansas, so he's down there in Arkansas taking care of his daughter and his new grandbaby, little girl, Amelia Grace. And Mom and her due to get out of the hospital tomorrow, and they are doing well. So congratulations to Councilman Party.
Thank you.
Another one to spoil and send home.
Laura?
I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce to you Abby Shademan. She's the new Director of Gage County Tourism and Special Events. She comes to us from Columbus, Nebraska. She recently graduated from Wayne State College. And Abby, why don't you tell them what your degree is in and just introduce yourself?
All right. It's kind of a mouthful. I got my degree in speech communications with a focus on public relations and organizational leadership with a minor in theater, so.
Very good.
And we're excited to have her at Beatrice.
How do you spell your last name, Abby?
S.C.H.
Okay. Very good.
Comment spelling.
So how many letters is that after your name on your degree?
I feel like quite a few.
Nice to meet you, Abby. Laura, thanks for introducing her.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, is discussion of different subjects. One is the community video.
As part of the community-wide branding project, FES has also presented the city with the idea of putting together a video for the community, something that's similar to what they put together at the branding meeting we had out at Classics here a couple months ago. They would look, though, to install, obviously, photos and videos of Beatrice and increase the quality of that video. They may do ones for tourism, they may do ones for economic development, it may just be a citywide one. They may range from thirty seconds to three minutes. The reason we bring this before you is because they've asked that if we're interested in doing this, they would like to come down and obviously take some video of homestead days. But in order to do that, they kind of needed to know whether or not we're interested now so they know whether or not to come down. Price of it, if you look on page fifty-three in your packet, they have a cost estimate of just under ten thousand dollars. And I believe the tourism or the Chamber may be interested in doing some cost sharing with us. How much, I think, is yet to be determined. But I guess the overall general interest is from the councils what we're interested in.
Can we use that fund that, with the gas bills and the electric bill, or not gas bills, the electric bill?
Beatrice Plus?
Yeah, there you go. I never can remember that fund. Can we use that?
Probably not. Thinking through that one, that would, probably not would be my answer off the top of my head.
You see a video fund?
Probably, if you're going to use any funds, L.B. forty would come to mind, or general funds. Probably be the two that would be most common.
I like the first one that we had. That was kind of cool.
What are the thoughts of Engage and then the Chamber? Do you think you could use this?
Yeah. You know, we're also looking at that possibility. I met with another company today, too, and got, you know, got some ideas with, from them on an economic development one. I think whatever, like this one, that's a general Beatrice quality of life type thing, any of those can be helpful. Any more with online and people looking and sort of researching our community, the more of those kinds of things that you can do, the better. So, and you know, and we do, you know, we can look at kind of segmenting out, what is Beatrice about as far as quality, what would be an economic development, business-oriented video, and then also even like tourism and all of those things that we have, so.
Would this be like the York and that, where it'd be able to be put on TV?
You could. I think that's one of the ideas, is they would shoot a thirty-second video if you wanted to have a TV as you could. You could run on Channel Nine, it's obviously a possibility, which is now, I guess, Channel one-eighty-one. Obviously, the website and those things would be other options.
The Chamber used to have a video that we would, that they distributed, and that video is so old, we can't use it anymore. And, you know, it is a marketing piece, it is a recruiting piece, it can just be used for a lot of things. Can also be used to help permeate the brand within our own community, with the new brand. So there's a lot of uses for it.
I really believe, too, with videos, you get what you pay for because you really want the quality. I, like you, Councilman Kerr, did like that short video that they put together that Stan narrated. And I would like to see, even, because that really, again, speaks to that message of what we're trying to do with the branding. So, it's short, and it says a lot, I think, about our community, and, you know, so, there's variations, I think, we can do with that.
Now that you've opened up the deal on the branding, Main Street has already accepted the branding and doing theirs. Where are we?
Well, we are still working on that and trying to come up with a final answer.
Bob?
So in other words, the major issue right now is for photographs for homestead days because we really haven't come to a conclusion on what the branding looks like.
It's photographs and videos. They want to come down and do photographs and videos of the event that's happening this weekend.
And this replaces the video that we burned for you guys? Okay. Which we've done for seven years.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it really is time to update that particular thing.
But the voice on that video was timeless.
Oh, it was excellent. Yeah, yeah. But the pictures are now out of date.
Just a minute. I have a little stretches up here. I used to work.
Stan?
Ted?
I'm not opposed to the concept of it. I guess, I, you know, Glenis has done a little bit of research, obviously, as she said, looked at the thing today. My concern here would be us kind of locking in with one group. I mean, if I owned this video production company and I wanted to come down and I was trying to sell this, I'd come down, I'd shoot my photos, I would do everything I needed to do at homestead days, and I'd present it to, and I understand that there's costs involved in it, but I would have some kind of information and then try to sell it to me. We're, they want to be paid for something that I'd like, I'd like to see the product that I'm going to try to buy, not pay somebody to generate product for me. So, you know, I wish they would, I wish they would have done some of the groundwork and said, and I understand that we saw a part of it at the branding thing, but this is what you can expect, these are the things that we're going to shoot, you know, here's a sample of it, we're going to condense it to this. That's what I would have liked to see. I, I'm not opposed to it, and I think it's a good tool, as they've both stated here. You know, YouTube, you know, you look at it on YouTube, but...
They will, they will work with us on a storyboard. We haven't even had a chance to get a storyboard even discussed, and what that storyboard would look like. Honestly, the time crunch right now, and I'm a little bit with it as well, but we're having homestead days this weekend, and we do homestead days once a year. So if we don't capture anything with homestead days this weekend, we are waiting a full another year to get, and that's, that's the biggest celebration the community has. That's one of the biggest events that really needs to be, you know, part of that in there.
I don't, I don't disagree.
So that's, that's kind of directed.
I'm just struggling with a little bit.
Rich?
Am I confused here? We're not, we're not allocating any funds for this thing. We're just saying that we would be interested in a video down the line if it's put together right. Is that correct? Or are we saying that we're going to allocate and do this tonight?
I think what we'd be looking for is to see what the City Council's level of interest is. If it's one of those that I, that we feel there's enough interest in there, we would turn to this company and see if they would come down. And between now and next council meeting, work on putting the interlocal agreements together, funding agreements with the Chamber and Engage, and the contract itself. We're not asking you to vote on a contract tonight.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We're not expending.
But at the same time, if we're not truly interested, I don't want to have this company come down and expend some time and money. come down and expend some time and money this weekend if, if we're not interested, or if we wanna look around some other options.
You're not expending any funds by a vote tonight, but you're basically promising them that you're going to buy it, whatever they're selling. That's my...
No, what I'm promising them is that I'm interested in it, and if they can put together something and, and, and put a contract together, that they may get my vote for it.
Bob?
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, I can definitely see, you know, Ted's point. Um, I, I guess with the conversation with them is, is, I think, for me, I have a, a certain level of interest.
I do, too.
But I certainly don't wanna lock in for ten thousand dollars and find out it's not what we want. And so, I think somehow that's the discussion you have to have with them, is, you know, you come down and shoot some photographs and you put together the good storyboard, and if everybody's on board with it, then we're gonna move forward with the contract. But without seeing something first, it's pretty tough to make that decision.
Don't disagree. They, I, I think they need to sell it to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. That's where I'm at with it.
Okay.
But if we can get, if we can get them down here to, to do the photos and whatever still shots and video that they wanna do, I think that's great.
Yep. I will call them and talk to them tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, ladies. Uh, next item is the city administrator's report.
Again, you have it in your pack, or you have to answer any questions you might have. I believe Chief Lang wants to give you a little bit of an update. Uh, there's some information here about dispatch, but we have hot new information arrived from the press, and so we're gonna let him share that with you.
Thank you, Bruce Lang, Chief of Police. At one o'clock today, the dispatch center was reopened.
Their home.
Their home, after six weeks of being relocated and re, and working in literally a very small area, and they are back in the, in the center. We're probably about seventy percent back with equipment, um, and computers and, and so forth, uh, so we're working hard to get that other thirty-plus percent up and running. That could be another month or two before it's a hundred percent. One of the things we've learned in, in talking to different vendors is this possibly is the worst lightning strike most of them had ever seen, um, in the scope of the stuff that was damaged. Basically, everything that was somehow remotely connected to that end, that tower was destroyed. So, it's good to have them home. Um, we are working forward, or moving forward, rather, with them being there. We are also taking on the City of Crete starting July first, and so the Nebraska, Southeast Nebraska, nine-one-one center will be the new name of the center, operated by City Beatrice. The reason I tell you that, and for the purposes of being here today, is want the public to know that the phones will be answered. If you call a non-emergency number, uh, they will say Southeast Communications. If you call nine-one-one, you will be, the phone will be answered Southeast nine-one-one as we go forward and we add more communities and a larger area. It, it was more, um, it was easier to identify by the region rather than by a specific town.
Do you have, do you have your, uh, your manager hired for that yet?
I do. I hired him today. Um, unfortunately, because we haven't made all the notifications we need to make, we're, we're not gonna release that name quite yet, if that's okay.
But you do have him hired.
Yeah, we, we...
Them hired.
Yep. Working, and we're hired, got, uh, well, hired the, two more full-time dispatchers by the end of this week, and two or three more part-time dispatchers by the end of this week. And, uh, moving forward, fast and furious.
Very good. Questions? Comments of the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the update.
A few other additional things I'd like to note in here. Uh, obviously, with the recent flooding that we've had, I'd be remiss if I didn't note the work that Mark Pethon and his guys have put trying to get, uh, the bike trails and campgrounds and everything else back up and, and operational. I'd also note that, uh, the WPC, their plant has taken on a large amount of water as a result of the, the flood. Uh, they, those guys have been successful in going back and looking at some places they believe where the water is coming in. Uh, they think they've shut those off and built a cap though, so the water doesn't get any intubate, uh, the plant down there. I will let you know there were some times during the flooding that those guys spent the night down at the plant in order to keep it up and operational. Uh, so when you think of some nice living accommodations, spending the night down at the wastewater treatment facilities, probably not the top of your list, uh, but those guys did it in order to make sure the pumps kept working. Uh, part of the problem we have are the pumps are water-cooled, and with the floodwater, there's enough debris in there that they couldn't get the water through the pumps anymore to keep cooling them off, and so the pumps would get hot and they'd shut themselves off. When they shut off, the planks would fill up with water, and so they had to be there constantly to keep the pumps cool and to keep adjusting them so they'd keep running. Uh, so those guys did a great job. Uh, additionally, I would note, the electric department, uh, is, if you notice, they're working through, uh, they converted a couple more blocks on their twelve-five conversion. It's a project you see in the budget every year. Uh, we just wanted to note that they're, you know, here's some progress. You'll see that a couple blocks were changed over, Ella fifth, the, third to fifth. Uh, the next thing you'll see is the two pole structures coming out of the alleyway there between Court and Ella and fourth to sixth. You'll see those two pole structures start coming out. So, it is slow progress at times, but there is progress being made on, on that project. And then finally, I'd note that the water department is about finished up with their water main project up on South Ninth Street. Uh, they'll get that one finished, and we'll start boring the river. May have been pushed back a little bit due to the size of the river at this point, but that project is set to get started here, uh, sometime soon.
Rich? Just one question, and I've been hit with it ever since the flood. When are you gonna spray? We've got mosquitoes over there that carry off a full grown heifer.
I believe that we're gonna start spraying this week. Uh, part of the problem, obviously, is with the amount of floodwater you have out there, it, there's a lot more standing water. Uh, we would ask for, obviously, the residents and customers, their, their assistance, grant your yard. If you have some places holding some standing water, dump it out, do what you can to help, help the problem. But Jason and his guys will be out spraying.